Look at him lock around.
Oh, you're gonna go up there to do it?
Yeah, I had a budget meeting with my first.
He can walk now. He wants to be able to show it off.
I don't know if they do that. But like.
All right, it is six fifteen. I will call the Monday, October twenty fifth budget hearing meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Bert Richard.
Yes.
Sarah Turner.
Yes.
Doug Kuchko. Josh Oestre.
Yes.
Abby Fisher.
Yes.
Steve Bowman.
Here.
Gary Spear.
Here.
Kevin Jensen.
Here.
Deanna Aubert.
Yes, here.
And Randy, can you tell us if a proper notice was given for this meeting?
Yes, please be advised that public notice of this meeting as required by sections nineteen point eight four and sixty five point nine zero of the Wisconsin statutes has been properly given. Such notice consisted of a notice and agenda to the official newspaper, Rice Lake Chronotype, to the Eau Claire Leader, and to radio stations WJAMC and WAQE, indicating the date, time, and place of the meeting. Such notice was given more than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting.
Thank you. It does appear that a proper notice was given for this meeting. So now we will move into the presentation of the twenty-one, twenty-two school district budget. And I would like to welcome our media here as we move into this meeting. And this budget meeting is being held to provide the final approval for the district's operating budget and to provide district residents an opportunity to gain information on the twenty-one, twenty-two school district budget. One of the main responsibilities of this Board of Education is to ensure that the budget is developed to maintain a sound financial footing for the district. This is one of our most important responsibilities. Budget has been prepared by staff and administration with board oversight and is based upon district needs. The preliminary property tax levy information, number one, our tax, total tax levy will be eighteen million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget. The district mill rate will remain constant. This is due in large part to the increased property values aids increase to the district as well. Our mill rate history is as follows. Two thousand eighteen, nineteen, it was ten dollars and eighty-four cents per thousand. Nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, ten dollars, eighty-four cents per thousand. Twenty, uh, twenty-one, ten dollars and eighty-four cents per thousand. Twenty-one, twenty-two, ten dollars and fourteen cents per thousand. The Rice Lake School District ranked thirty-third in mill rate as compared to the thirty-nine districts in the CISA eleven for the twenty, uh, twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. And for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the district's state equalization aid estimated to be twelve million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars, an increase of eight hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars from the aid amount received from the twenty-twenty-one school year of eleven million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. At this time, I will move this meeting over to Mr. Drost, and he will process, go through the process and the timelines.
So, yes, as Mr. Jensen stated, the, the budget is the, the district's financial plan to achieve its mission and vision and, and really meet the needs of students within the school district, complies with Board of Education policies and provides the necessary, necessary resources to continue existing programs and look at new initiatives as well. Really, the timeline for the budget we're going to be talking about now started last December. And so the timeline, you know, in a couple of months, we'll be talking about next year's budget again. But really, in December, we start to review enrollment projections for the following year, financial projections for the following year. In January, you as a board, review those preliminary projections, and also budget documents are distributed to administrators and staff. And March, as a part of the budget process, you look at the preliminary staffing report. And in April, you approve that preliminary staffing report. Also, in April, there's a preliminary budget is due to the business office, to Mr. Blackholler, and he and the staff there start to compile that preliminary budget. And then in May, there's a budget overview with you as a board. In June, we hold a public hearing. And then in October, that budget is published in the chronotype. And also in October, you approve the tax levy. I'm gonna have Mr. Blackholler, before we get into the general operations and source revenues, talk a little bit about revenue limits and enrollment for this year.
Yeah, from a standpoint of revenue limits, I mean, that's something that's been around from, since nineteen ninety-three. And kind of is, it's, I call it kind of a, you know, it's, it's a, the revenue limits kind of controlled, obviously, the revenue that we can get. And it's actually kind of a teeter totter. So if our aid goes up, generally, our, our tax levy will go down. And those are really the two main components of it. It's probably ninety-five percent of all the revenue we receive. It's probably a little less nowadays with some of the ester funds and so on. But it's a, pretty much the main source of funding for the school. The enrollment is going down slightly. A rough, I think it was thirty, thirty students. But we're ultimately probably gonna be fairly consistent going forward from rough estimates of projections going forward. But I think there's been some COVID impact a little bit with respect to enrollment. So that's, I guess, part of it. And then I'm gonna move on. I guess I'll move right on to the budget. And there's a document, this document here that I'm gonna just kind of scan through. I'm not gonna read it to you, but just pick some high points out through here. If you look just down on the bottom graph, and I don't know why that, that graph on the bottom didn't print out, you know, is better, but it should be basically school years on the bottom. But ultimately, out on the far right-hand side, you know, it looks like our, our mill rate's staying pretty much consistent, and it is pretty close, but it is gonna start, our drop, it's starting to drop. And actually, I, we project going forward that our mill rate will continue to drop into the next year or two. A lot of that has to do with property value growth. Some of it is, is, is equalization aid. And our, so overall, I, I think in, in the next two to three years, we should see some decline in our overall mill rate. Going to the next page, that talks about revenue limits, and so I don't really need to touch on, on that much. We've talked about that already. The school choice program, that's a program that effectively was put in place, I don't know, there was probably three, four, I don't know, it's been in there for five, I think, five years or so. But basically, students can go to parochial schools, and then our tax levy is, our, our taxpayers are levied for that. This year, we're looking at just about two hundred and twenty, oh, it's two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. That's what was attributed to us in our revenue calculation from the department of revenue. So that much is going to parochial schools in, in, out of our tax levy. Yeah.
Is there any change in the fact that that would be listed as a separate item on people's tax form?
I've not been made aware of anything, and it certainly isn't that case. I, and I'm, I'm, so I don't believe so, no. But it is, it is an item in our, it basically becomes part of the school's tax levy, and, and for all intents and purposes. Right. So that eighteen million, one seventy-nine that Mr. Jensen mentioned, that's included in that number of, of our tax levy. So we're effectively showing a tax levy as, as a school district tax levy, but two hundred and twenty-five thousand of it's actually for parochial schools. And if you look on the next part down here, per people spending, it's a graph that'll get mentioned a little later in the document. But it shows, if you look right in the middle in that really fine print down there, I should have brought my readers, but in the very fine print, right in the middle is Rice, you know, middle, pretty much dead center middle is, is our per people spending on, on districts that are either comparable size or in our region. We also look at, just have some data to show what the highest spending district is, to give you an idea of that. We'll talk about that in a minute. Mr. Jensen touched on this, but our aid went up significantly, eight hundred and one thousand dollars. That's a big jump, and our property tax is actually going down this year, which is kind of atypical, I will say honestly. So we're going down by eighty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which is not a huge drop, but it's a drop. So that's, that's helpful, obviously. And then Mr. Jensen mentioned our tax levy at eighteen million, one hundred, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine forty-two. So it's, the, last year's tax levy was, I think it was eighteen million, two sixty-five, I believe. So then if you move a little bit down, so the, the decrease in our tax levy is about a half a percent decrease in our tax levy, which again, typically, it's going up a percent, two percent, three percent, depending on how things are going. So that's positive. And then if you look down here, our overall mill rate is dropping significantly, and that's because our property value growth is, you know, you're spreading it out over a bigger, a bigger property base. So we've got a, our mill rate's actually dropping by fi, uh, six point five, five percent because of property value growth. Then I'll move on down to the, or up to the next part here of the general operations. So last year, our actual expenditures were thirty-eight million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, seventy-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. And our budget expenditures are actually forty-one million, thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. You see that big vari- variation between the two. Part of that's related to COVID revenue that we're coming online. Part of that is also related to our debt service, that our debt service levy is going up by almost a half a million dollars. So that's, that's why that significant difference. And obviously, budget is a little more conservative than actual, often technically coming a little better. So next item down here is the energy exemption. That shows, all that really is, is it's, we're something we're required by state statute to report out at each, our annual meeting each year. And it just tells our public that we're levying money for an energy project, happened to be the middle school. We did that back four or five years ago. And actually, with a little work, got it working the way it should be, and with a couple conversations with the design people, but, but it is working really well now and serves, and serving the purpose, replacing equipment that was in bad need of replacement. So moving on to the next page, page four, down on the bottom part, I mentioned that graph earlier. So the Rice Lake Hurry School District, and this is basically two-year-old data, but that's how we, we, how we get it. Nineteen twenty, we spent eleven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, and that's including, that's educational cost. And the state average was eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. So we're a little under state average. But then, if you look at the highest, highest spending district, on the graph at least, we're nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars a student, less than they are. That, I think, has to do with there's some federal money that goes to that school district. So it's a significant component of their revenue. And then moving up to debt service. So our total indebtedness as of June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one, seventeen million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. So that's been coming down fairly well. We did a large prepayment on a debt that we could call, that's callable debt, and it was nine or ten thousand that we prepaid, I believe, last year. So that helps us, you know, bringing that number down. If you look at this next, the next item, we could have almost eighteen billion, yeah, almost eighteen billion dollars in debt in theory, which would be bad. So, no, it says eighteen million, but that's not right. That should be a one, zero over. That's, I apologize for that. Should be, it should be, it should be a hun, one hundred and seventy-nine million, three hundred and sixteen dollars, and five hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety cents. So I, I missed a zero and didn't move it over. So, so we would have, we have significant capacity if we wanted it, but we wouldn't be, we wouldn't want to do that. Moving into the OPEB trust, the OPEB trust, July of two thousand twenty, starting the year, we had three million, one hundred and thirty thousand, and twenty, twenty-three dollars. And going at the end of the year, with both investment returns and money contributed to the trust, we're looking at three million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine. So that's not fully funded, but pretty well funded. I think four point five million would be fully funded, if I remember correctly. Okay. And then on the last page, I guess, really, though, we've got a community service levy that's really designed to pay for what, just what it kind of speaks of is community, community programming. We pay some money to the Boys and Girls Club, a hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. That's for after-school program that we help to support. We also have, we have a middle school intermural program with forty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy is what budgeted. So a total of two hundred and ten thousand, nine twenty being spent in Fund Eighty. And then, so another additional information, this year and next year, the, the legislature basically gave us a zero for a revenue limit increase. So we're not gonna have a revenue limit increase in real dollars. They did that with the idea that the ester funding was put in play, and that was in theory supposed to support our operating needs. That really doesn't. The ester is supposed to support other expenditures above and beyond. And so it does create some budget issues, and a lot of the business managers and superintendents are out there talking a lot to people about, that wasn't really, that wasn't fair, and what are we gonna do in two years, you know? So there's some potential issues financially going forward. And I know they did a financial stabilization fund, and I don't know how that's ultimately gonna come together and result in any benefit to the district. But they theoretically put money aside with the idea that they weren't gonna give us a revenue limit increase, because we had this ester funding to, to support that. Well, how that actually, how they're gonna translate into, into the revenue formula, I'm not really sure. So into the future, because it's kind of an ongoing growing cost. And so it's, it'll be interesting to see what they do. And then I, I mentioned the equalized values down in the bottom part, the equalized value went up by six point four percent. That's probably, it seems actually low to me when you look at how real estate has grown in value. But it's actually, it's looking backwards. So I think this year, we're gonna see a more significant, this Cummings budget year, we're gonna see is much more significant, I would guess, increase in equalized value. You look at our graph here, you remember way back in nine, ten, and then the economy kind of took a hit, took a hit, and we went down in value. And that's the first time we'd ever done that, honestly, that I am aware of, at least in the, probably the last forty years, when I look back at the data. We're now on a steady climb up. And obviously, this last year, it's kind of, really kind of pulling up from a standpoint of property values. So that's it with this document. Then I'm gonna get into the actual budget data details, and that will, will be on the edge of your seat for the next ten, fifteen minutes here. But no, but I'm just gonna move through these things fairly quickly. So I'm, I'm just gonna start out with our revenues, overall revenues. And in the first, and under our local taxes, you can see that our, our tax levy has dropped. So we went from fourteen million, six, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars, six hundred and two dollars, down to fourteen million, fifty thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. So we're, our tax levy for the general fund is going down. And remember, I said our debt service levy went up a little bit. And so the two of those kind of somewhat offset each other. Moving a little further down, we got our non-capital sales, that's just resale, various items that we might sell over time. Admission fees, so for school activity fund, you notice it, it dropped off significantly. So right now, we're anticipating admission fees to be up, but we'll see how that rolls. And then when we look at interest from investments, you can see that dropped off significantly from the eighteen, nineteen year into the nineteen twenty, or I'm saying the nineteen twenty year into the twenty twenty-one, and we're anticipating maybe a little bit of an increase, because our overall cash balances are up a little bit. But, but interest rates aren't great right now. Other revenue and sources, you know, and student fees and pool fees, we're anticipating, hopefully, that to be up a little bit. That would be based on potential, actually, people buying passes for things and all that, or, you know, or actually, that wouldn't be the right. I, I don't know if we, trying to think if that would change. I don't know if it would change or not. We'll, I'm not sure if that would actually go up or not, based on COVID or not. Payment for services, we've got open enrollment. I'm projecting this number, but, you know, we, we don't really know what that number is until the final end is, is there, you know, the finals, end of the school year, when we get total in and out students. Transit of aid, we got federal CISA, we get a little bit of money from CISA for, for aid that they, basically for services they provide our students, and then they get aid on it, and that gets transited to us. And then the, the bigger money section here, this is one of the, obviously, the, the six hundreds is state revenue. And so we've got categorical aid, which is library and transportation aid, and some other state aids. We're talking a hundred and eighty-five thousand, which is pretty much on par. Equalization aid, you can see a significant jump there of that eight hundred thousand dollars from the prior year, going up to twelve million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. That's a significant increase. And then DPS, DPI special project grants, it's, it's just specialized grants that we get for different programming. We were showing a slight decrease in that. And then moving down to the Sage Student Achievement Grant, I always project low, and we end up getting, doing better than that. And so we're, we're probably projected about a hundred thousand low right now. But I, I would expect us to do a little better than that. And it's just being conservative. And then I guess the next, the next item, DNR payments, is that thousand dollars, a kind of a tax, a cat, a payment, low taxes when they own, have property in your district. And then the last item is computer aid, and per people student aid, that was the thing that was implemented by the Walker administration back a lot, a long time ago, and that's continued to be there. It was in lieu of the revenue limit increase, to be honest, back, back in those days. So then, next area is our federal programs. We've got, the first item that really has any amount of money in it is special project grants. And that would represent Title II, and it also would be our ester funds. So that's where that's landing. And then we have in seven fifty is Title I and CIS, which is special ed money set aside to be able to be used in Fund X. Moving further down into the revenues, we've got, and this, and then, actually, I don't mention this, in eight sixty, we have a revenue in, in twenty twenty-one, but not before or after. That was the sale of that school forest property, and that's what that represents. And we don't anticipate selling any more land in the near future. And then we have adjustments. So we get insurance reimbursement for, from work comp, sometimes even from our self-funded health plan at times. So that falls in that category. Refund of disbursement, so we get E-rate and charge backs in this category, just estimating ten thousand, but it, who knows exactly ultimately what that number's gonna be. And then other miscellaneous, and it's just very small revenues. So we're, if we look at our total fund, fund X budget, we have total revenues of thirty-two million, four hundred and thirty, seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. I'm gonna go right down to the bottom. Our total expenditure budget is thirty-two million, seven fifty-eight, and thirty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. So, and actually, this is something new to, even the finance committee, we were projecting about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall. It closed, and that was because the revenue limit and the aid change, that was significant. So that, that separation changed quite a bit. And so we're, you know, we're really in the range of, you know, about three hundred thousand dollars off instead of the seven fifty, which is positive. Now I'll go back up into the, the different categories. So school expenditure budgets are broken into categories, direct instruction, and then support. And then there's basically non-program transactions. Direct instruction are the hundred thousand function, supports the two hundred thousand function, and then non-program, which is transfers to different funds and open, actually, open enrollments considered in that category on the expenditure side. Those are considered not directly student and non-direct, not even directly support. So undifferentiated curriculum, one hundred and eleven, one hundred and ten thousand is elementary ed. We're, we're looking at five million, eight hundred and four thousand, eighty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. So that's just for elementary ed. We move down to the next category. That's really the general ed. Would be the typical, you know, general ed instructional classes, you know, math, science, social studies, that kind of thing. And there, we're projecting six million, eight hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. And then we move into the vocational programming. So that's our, our shop driver, we don't have drivers' head, but shop, tech, tech ed, hag face, and that kind of stuff. We're projecting eight hundred and ninety thousand, eight fifty-five there. Physical curriculum, that's our FIA and health programming. And we're projecting one million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, ninety-two dollars in total. And then we move down to our, our athletics budget mainly. It's co-curricular, so it would include other programming as well. But co-curricular and athletics, and so we're talking five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and nineteen is budgeted. Last year, we had, we, we, the board agreed to increase, increase that budget, if you remember. But then we had COVID, and we really didn't spend what we would have normally spent on our athletics. So there's a kind of a, a, a jump in that budget, but it's reflective of the fact that our, we really increased it in last year officially, and we ended up not having to use some of that money because of the way things worked. And then one seventy, that's basically special, special curriculums like GTESL, homebound. And we're looking at roughly three hundred grand there, three hundred thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. Moving into support, okay, in support, we've got guide, in two hundred and ten thousand, that's guidance at risk, nursing, psych, social, and social work. We're looking at right there at one million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars. In the next category, in two hundred and twenty thousand function, that's our curriculum and assessment technology, our library. We're looking at one million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine eighty-three. And then general administration, that would be the superintendent's budget. And also, I think we have effective educator, I think, quoted out there, as well as the board budget. And, and we have six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars budgeted there. And they're pretty close to prior year. School, school building administration, that's really the, what I would call the principals' budgets. And there, we're talking one million, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. It's up a little bit, and it's just a little over a hundred thousand up there. And then moving to business administration, we've got maintenance, custodial, transportation, custo, I mentioned that. And then the business services, we're at five hundred and eighty-six, five hundred and eight, five million, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine thirty-nine. And that's up a fair amount. And part of that has to do with the budgeting for the, we're paying off part, there's the payment for the solar project. We've got the wild building to finish, and that's actually gonna be in total more than what we spent here on this building. So it's up a little bit there. And then central services, that's really phone internet, and also some of our, what I'd call in lieu of health pa, in lieu of health payments. So we're projecting two hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred, eight hundred and twenty dollars there, little, little down from last year. Insurance and judgments, that number is our district insurance, work comp, liability, auto, and stuff like that. Projecting a number of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. I would actually expect that to be lower. And what I mean by that is it's budgeted conservatively. I would venture to guess we're gonna land probably closer, a little even under what our last year's expenditures on that are. And then debt service, that's just, we have a paying agent fee that we have to pay for, basically to send us a bill to pay our debt. And so that's a, that's a long story. But basically, Associated Trust sends us a bill every year to make sure that we make our debt payment. And it's something that you set up with, with, when you, when you do a, a large bond issue like our two thousand and fifteen project. And then um other support services, um, so that's retirement, CISA services, um, and tech staff. About three, four years ago, tech used to be out in the two hundred and twenty thousand series function. It got moved down into this category. But um, so that's, we're projecting a million, forty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars there. The non-program transaction, the first one is transfers between funds. So if we do a transfer to twenty-seven or forty-nine, that comes out of there. Um, fund ten's responsible for all other funds in theory, fund fifty, fund theoretically, fund thirty-nine, although you levy a separate tax into thirty-nine and thirty-eight. And um also for fund twenty-seven, the majority of this levy is paying for the cost that um categorical aid doesn't cover on, for special ed. So that significant, that three million, five hundred and sixty-one thousand is for the most part paying for special ed, fund twenty-seven. Four hundred and thirty thousand uh function, that's like I said, open enrollment, secondary options. And I'm just budgeting that at neutral. We're probably a little off par in that respect, meaning we have a few more going out than in. Um, and then um other non-pro program transactions, that's a tax levy refund. So if somebody if somebody doesn't pay the county or the city their taxes and we've levied for them, you know, in other words, you don't pay your taxes, we actually have to refund the municipality that, that levied those taxes back, their money. So that's what that's about. So when we talked about the comparative to between the expense and revenue, um, so that's, we already have discussed. So I'll move on now to the special ed side of it. So special ed's got to be balanced. So effectively, fund ten's responsible to make sure that fund ten, twenty-seven stays balanced. So um effectively, we've got a, um, a revenue, basically a revenue that comes into fund twenty-seven. All total, those revenues turn out to be five hundred and thirty, uh, five hundred, five million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-one. So that's if you look down on the, down on the bottom part of that budget, you'll see the same number uh down on mid-page on page three, or I should say on my page three, I don't, um, but uh, the expenditure budget for twenty-seven is the same and they have to match. Um, so looking at the um expenditure budget on most, the largest part of that is for direct instruction, about four million, one hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars is for direct instruction. That's providing aids, classroom support and so on. Um, and then a, a small portion that ends up being in the two hundred thousand, the support area, which is part of the guidance, psych, nursing and OT in the first one and two-ten. Most of, um, you're allowed to apply some of the special ed funds effectively towards those categories. There's actual formula that the DPI gives you that says you can apply this much to special ed and pay for it out of, out of twen- twenty-seven. And the reason why you do that is you get aid on the money. So you get categorical aid on it. So we got five hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars of our guidance, psych, um, nursing, OT and PT budgeted there. And that's aid, all aidable costs typically. Then in two hundred and twenty thousand function, we have special ed support and oversight. So that's really the special ed, um, you know, that'd be theoretically, um, some of the grant funds, some of uh what would be considered the director's budget and so on. So that's three hundred and fifty-two thousand, uh, seven forty-nine. And then we move down to business administration in that category. That would be a budgeted for various things, facilities, transportation. Um, so if they do a facilities improvement for special ed, they can actually budget money there. But most of that is special transportation and that's two hundred and four thousand, one hundred and seven dollars, one hundred and seventy dollars. Um, and then uh non-program transactions on the bottom down there in four thirty, we got sixty grand that we're just estimating that we would be getting for open enrollment payments uh to other districts. So then we'll move to debt service. Uh, this is a kind of different here. So we've got total revenues in debt service of three, three million, five hundred, uh, three million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. But we're actually budgeting to expend only one million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand and two dollars and ninety-five cents. And the reason for that is, is we're levying right now and we're going to be prepaying debt in the near future. Actually, our debt becomes callable in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And um, so we're going to be able to basically prepay that debt and, and keep our tax rate down is part of the, part of the plan of the finance committee. Moving on to fund fifty, um, in fund fifty, we, we're actually revenues continue to go up. If you look at what happened last year, we, we, we took in one million, four hundred thousand dollars and we spent one million, eighty-eight out, one million, eighty-eight thousand dollars. So we had, we had a significant increase in, in uh fund balance in fund fifty. I'm conservatively projecting our revenue and, and probably a little more aggressively projecting expenses. I'm guessing we're going to have another year like that because we're not, we're getting the federal government paying for all of it. Um, and so uh I'm guessing that we're going to continue to have that going on. Probably might be something in the future if we need to do some renovations in the food service program is something to look at. So, um, and then obviously a little bit more in the future, probably because if we actually, like in the last meeting, we talked about uh the uh community center slash pool project. Um, and this is where we would be probably helping to pay for some of the costs of that, that operation. Okay, that's all I have and I know it was plenty.
Any questions or discussion?
With the fund fifty, the Fed government paying, uh, did they have a cutoff during this year? Did they extend that through the whole year?
It's all the way through, yeah. Yeah. So I, I would anticipate that we're going to have a surplus, a significant surplus again. Good. So.
Pat, how much, how much of um, sorry, Fed seven thirty, seven thirty is ester funds?
Um, let me look real quick. I want to get, I gotta get to the page. So I'm looking at it and see if I can correct. Wow. Um, actually, that amount is probably just about one point two in that, in that revenue.
Okay. And so how long?
And that's an estimate. And quite honestly, we're gonna, we're gonna be off. And the reason why I say that is we still have ester three and we're just going to be into that cycle of getting that grant, that, that grant has not been approved, I think, at the state level by the Fed, or the feds. They've got their plan in. But there's a significant, that number's probably going to be, I wouldn't be surprised if it's, it's a half a million more or, or more than that, that that number's going to go up. We've got three point one million in ester funds in ester three. Um, that's got to be spent by twenty, twenty twenty-four. So.
Okay. So we can count on ester funds for a couple more years?
Right, right. Then the problem with that is it doesn't really help us in our day-to-day, you know, it's not, it doesn't help you with, you know, if you think in your own personal budget, it doesn't make, help you make your car payment. It doesn't help you pay your mortgage because it's your general everyday expenses that you've always had. It's that above and beyond expenditure. That's what that's intended for. So we, you know, that's, that's part of the issue of the state saying, no, we're not going to give you a revenue limit increase. Oh, but other costs go up, fuel, you know, wages, you know, benefits, all those things change, but they're not giving us more revenue to support that.
Are we delineating how we're spending that, those funds?
Very specifically. And actually, we spent a lot of time, uh, Marcia spent a ton of time on that. Um, I, a lot of it went to supporting, providing additional support to students. Some of the, and I, you'd be able to speak to that better in, in any, in detail, but um, I know that we've, we've hired a number of people that were in, in, in doing support roles.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the budget hearing meeting. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, and this meeting is adjourned.
All right. Back to the
Reminder, I will keep it streaming just for, we're going to use the same streaming link for the next meeting as well. So we're still streaming.
Why do you create a meeting?
Those are bud- budget meetings.
Tens along with safety committee, Bart Jones.
Yeah. Faith Peters. And Lucas. Junior.
Junior?
Yeah.
That's right. Junior freshman.
Almost a senior.
Almost.
Yeah, I brought my brother. Thank you.
Well, Bert, did you put the boat away yet? Did you? Yeah.
Oh, that's always a sad thing.
It is a sad day. I know we finally took the jet ski out last weekend. It was a sad day.
So then the guy that likes to fish with, he said, will you take me down the river and show me what you, because I fish the river in the fall, November. So I took him down. Tippercock, we didn't catch anything. Control. You know that guy? So what do you guys do? Any kind of fishing or anything?
Yeah, they like fish.
Do you like?
Sometimes, but yeah.
That's more than I do. I quit ice fishing several years ago, but now I found two places that are going to, because I want a warm tent. And I sold mine and my heater, but I got all my others. It's all that snow and news tonight in the all the snow in the mountains to the California.
Simulator gets fired up though, that's for sure. Looks like coming off the west coast.
Am I speaking right?
A lot of snow. Oh, really? Yeah. My body's kind of ready to be done.
Hey, we're lucky where you live, what we do.
We checked out that T-Box place?
I'm excited for that.
I don't even know if it's open yet, but.
No, it's not open yet. The girl that ran the bar at the Turtleback, she said November one, but
Didn't look like it was happening, huh?
But it looks like they're going to like soccer. Kind of like a
Gaming place. Makes me feel bad for the one that almost started.
I know. He doesn't, he doesn't like less.
Does he? Is he doing anything currently?
Yeah, he fires about a bit. Going in there a couple times. I have one in my garage.
Right. Um, just the sports. Says the guy that but they may be involved in.
I'm gonna try this one more time. Just a reminder, because we don't I used to love reading. It's kind of from a western movie where it's not a big deal, but.
That budget hearing, Kevin, that we just went through, was that the same as that thick book that they used to take us?
That just breaks it down more. This is just the summary of that, but yes.
I think he's asking for a copy. Oh, yeah. You want a copy? Yeah, you want a copy?
Yeah, right.
Good bedtime reading.
Right. Campfire reading. By the falls alone.
I typically just enjoy nature by
I think I told We suggest moving Burke around the corner for right now.
Into the closet.
I'm recreational. So do you get to read the proclamation?
I do. I do have to read those.
After those. Good. Where has it been wrong? Can you add an accent? I use those. My favorite part of being line right there.
Yeah, my son went there eight years. No. He went to the Brooklyn School in, um, an alley called St. Joe's also. Yeah. Good education. Oh, my God. Yeah, probably five and twelve years.
Yeah. I wouldn't have said there'd been an option, but
It was Regis? Oh, really? That was our arch enemy because I went to McDonald's.
All right, it is seven o'clock. I will call the Monday, October twenty-fifth regular board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Sarah Turner.
Here.
Josh Astrein.
Here.
Abby Fisher.
Here.
Steve Bowman.
Here.
Gary Spear.
Here.
Kevin Jensen.
Here.
Deanna Aubert.
Here.
Bert Richard.
Here.
And Randy, can you tell us if a proper notice was given for this meeting?
Yes, please be advised that public notice of this meeting, as required by sections nineteen point eight four and sixty-five point nine zero of the Wisconsin statutes, has been properly given. Such notice consisted of a notice and agenda to the official newspaper, the Rice type chronotype, to the O'Clair leader and to radio stations WGMC and WAQE, indicating the date, time and place of the meeting. Such notice was given more than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Proper notice was given for this meeting. And I was informed that we do not have anybody that signed up for appearances this evening. So we will move on then to the twenty-one, twenty-two tax levy and uh the twenty-twenty-one uh tax comparison. And Randy, you want to say anything to that?
In terms of the, the tax levy piece, and Mr. Black Oliver went over this during the uh budget uh hearing, in terms of the oops, sorry. Um, in terms of, in terms of the resolution, um, it's uh been determined, and this is part of that resolution, that fourteen million dollars, fourteen million twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-one cents, in addition to all other revenues, will be necessary to maintain the general operation of the district beginning for next year. And our tax rate, uh, as he said, our mill rate, it's been constant the last several years at ten dollars and eighty-four cents per thousand. Uh, going down to ten dollars and fourteen cents per thousand, also a decrease of seventy cents per thousand. And as he mentioned, uh, during the budget hearing, we expect that to decrease again over the next coming years.
All right. Thank you for that. So then uh we will get into the adoption of the twenty-one, twenty-two school district budget. Whereas a proposed budget has been prepared to provide for the operations and maintenance of the schools of the district and provide for retirement and indebtedness. Whereas a public hearing was held and public comment received on the proposed budget for the July one, twenty, twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty, twenty-two school year, as required by this Wisconsin statute sixty-five point nine four subsection four. Therefore, be it resolved that a general fund ten expenditure budget of thirty-two million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, thirty-one dollars and seventy-two cents, a special education fund twenty-seven balance of five million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, non-referendum debt service fund thirty-eight of five hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-five cents, and a referendum debt service fund number thirty-nine budget of one million, one hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. A food service fund budget fifty of one million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars, and the and the community service fund budget of two hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, totaling forty-one million, two hundred and twenty-three dollars... I'm sorry, forty-one million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and five dollars and sixty-seven cents in expenditures in all funds be adopted. Do I have a motion to adopt the budget?
So moved.
Second.
Budget, uh, motion has been made and seconded to adopt the budget as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, and the budget has been adopted. Next, we have the resolution for the tax levy. So whereas, after due and careful consideration, it has been found the amount of fourteen million, twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-one cents, in addition to all other school revenues, will be necessary to maintain the general operations of the Rice Lake area school district, and three million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and nine cents for retirement of bonds and long-term loans, for the development of community service programming of two hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, making it a total of eighteen million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars for the period beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022. Whereas, the Rice Lake area school district is able to charge back to the various municipalities four thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars in uncollected personal property tax due to the district from prior years. Therefore, be it resolved, the amount of eighteen million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents be spread upon the tax rolls of the city of Rice Lake, Village of Hoggan, the towns of Barron, Bear Lake, Cedar Lake, Doyle, Oak Grove, Rice Lake, Stanfold, Stanley, and Sumner in Barron County, Birchwood, Long Lake, and Sirona in Washburn County, and such areas as comprises the Rice Lake area school district. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the tax levy.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and the tax levy has been approved. And now we have the motion on designating public depositories. Whereas, Wisconsin statutes 120.44 and 120.12 subsection 7 require that school board of a unified school district be designated public depositories. Therefore, be it resolved that the board designate any banking institution or savings and loan association located within the school district, and the local governmental pool investment fund as qualified public depositories for the school district under chapter 34 of the Wisconsin statutes, and require that all deposits in banking institutions or savings and loans associations over five hundred thousand be collateralized. Would entertain a motion to designate public depositories.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. Next, we have the approval of our regular session and closed session meeting minutes from Monday, October 11th, 2021. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion for the minutes has written.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
There, there is one change, I think should be made on page three of the minutes. It's in the policy section. It says, I made a revision to item 6, which I did, but then the next sentence, which begins with, it was requested policy and rule 151 and policy 383 be brought back. That wasn't actually said aloud at, during the meeting. Um, those have been pulled, but it wasn't actually said aloud during the meeting, so I'd like to actually scratch that sentence from the minutes.
So, Deanna, would you like to approve the amended?
Sure. Motion to approve the amended.
Motion has been made to approve the amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes have been approved. Our consent agenda tonight has three employment resignations and three employment recommendations. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of our consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and the consent agenda has been approved. Now, fun part of our evening, where we get to, uh, talk a little bit and hear a little bit about our students in the district. So we're gonna start off tonight with Tainter Elementary.
Hi, I am Sarah Moles, fourth grade teacher at Tainter Elementary, um, and I have Kelsey Cluppert here with me. I have nominated Kelsey for the fourth grade student of the month at Tainter. Uh, Kelsey is the type of student that goes above and beyond the classroom and school-wide expectations. She is a great role model for her peers. She also is a great friend to every person that she encounters throughout her day, and is willing to help whenever needed, whether it be an adult or a fellow classmate of hers. Kelsey is a very bright girl who works incredibly hard at everything she does. She is a delight to have in my class, and I am so proud of her and believe that she is so deserving of this award as student of the month.
All right. Next, Hoggan Elementary.
Good evening. I am Natalie Springer, and I'm here representing our music, art, and our FIED teachers at Hoggan School. This is Talia Waldron. She is the daughter of Kristen Sarah Waldron. And we have three different areas, and this is what all of our teachers had to say about Talia. Talia is one student who sticks out to me as really having a lot of perseverance. One example was last year when we were learning to read notes on the staff, and this is of course from music. At first she struggled, but she continued to work hard at it and improve. She did this all with a great attitude. I see this positive attitude every day in music class. I have also seen it rub off on some of her classmates and her friends. Talia shows the warrior way by being attentive, respectful, and trying her best every day. And then from art teacher, from Mrs. Grenier, she said Talia is a true artist. Her creative spirit, vivid imagination, and cheerful, positive attitude are all things that make her a pleasure to have in the art room. Talia contributes to our artistic environment by always being a great role model, hard worker, and a student willing to help others. And then from Miss Lehman from FIED, she said that Talia has been such a joy to have in PE so far this year. She is a great listener and wonderful teammate to her classmates. She is quick with a smile and first to high-five someone else on their achievements. She tries her best every day and is a great addition to our physical education class. So congratulations Talia from Hoggan.
Rice Lake Middle School.
Hi, my name is Ellie Sirick, and I teach seventh grade at the middle school, um, and I'm here tonight along with Josh Tomisch, and we are very honored. This is Kate. Um, she is an absolute joy to have in class. Academically, she strives to do her best and demonstrates resiliency when she is put to the test. She is honest and fair, hardworking, and determined. She contributes to her classes in a positive and friendly way, elevating the learning experience for all students. Most importantly, Kate is kind to everyone. She's always smiling and offering to help others. Kate truly leads by example. Her strong character and growth mindset are unmatched, and she is simply wonderful, making Rice Lake Middle School a great place to be.
High School.
Hello, I am Katie Ann Dusel, and I am nominating Natalie Jarkowski, a senior, at Rice Lake High School. Unfortunately, Natalie could not be here this evening. She had to work. Uh, and I know her mother is streaming in from wherever the camera is. Hi Cheryl, uh, to, to watch this tonight. So, uh, it is an honor and a privilege to nominate Natalie for the Student Recognition Award. Natalie is not a shiny penny. Uh, her time at the high school has not always been smooth sailing, straight A's, sunshine and unicorns. However, Natalie has worked extremely hard, both academically and personally, to heal, learn, and grow. The progress she has made, especially in the last year, has been very inspiring. Natalie is on track now to graduate early, and she has grown, shown great optimism, determination, and work ethic. This school year Natalie has been very beaming, smiling, and excited about what is to come. Natalie has proven herself to be a phoenix. She has been doing the hard work of burning through her past, rising from the ashes, and being brave enough to become... When Natalie puts her mind to something, she is unstoppable, and I am very grateful to be able to witness her rising.
All right. Congratulations to all of our students that received recognition this evening. Your names will be added to the, uh, other students that receive these recognitions throughout the school year, and at the end of the school year, one lucky winner will receive a Chromebook from the school district, so good luck. All right, we will move into our reports. Start off with our safety committee update. Yeah, we could, we could give them a little pause and let them exit. They heard how long your report's gonna be, so.
Ten seconds. Okay, well, the, uh, safety committee met last Tuesday, and, uh, there are 25 of us on that committee. Not all were present, but there were certainly people present from the necessary key stakeholders. We reviewed and approved the minutes from the prior meeting, which was back in July. The, uh, the emergency cards are kind of a, you know, ongoing thing that we talk about, and it's just important because we refer to those whenever something would come up, and they need to be kept updated in, in a familiar area and, and a good resource. Talked about the building's safety drills and that those are going to be, um, conducted and reported as, as necessary. We discussed, um, evacuation processes need to be set in place for students with special needs, whether that be physical or mental, and to ensure that, um, all the necessary precautions are, are taken, and that those are possibly even, um, documented in, in IEP plans or IEP meetings. Um, there, there are some Alice trainings that are going on and that weren't, uh, done, even just as early as last week here in the admin building. And then we discussed our meeting, our next meeting, which is going to be January 18th, in that we are going to talk about, um, tabletop exercises and event evacuation. We are going to discuss parent and student reunification. One of the other things that we mentioned that I don't think I talked about yet was, uh, in the go-bags, well, not only the importance of bringing them, even in drills, you're used to grabbing it, but what steps we're gonna put in place to make sure that student lists are up, updated and accurate as what they can. I mean, it's changing every day, but, uh, within a reasonable, uh, expectation to keep those updated and, and in those, uh, appropriate go-bags. So in, in other discussion, we talked about, um, youth mental health first aid. Uh, there's gonna need to be, uh, some, some district strat training done. Uh, and then some need for enhanced communication in Hoggan Elementary. Some, some stuff between the custodian office and just other areas of the school that... It's happened just in opportune times, and we needed to make that communication, it wasn't able to be made, so we need to shore up some of those shortcomings. That was basically about it. Our next meeting, as I mentioned, is Tuesday, January 18th at 1:00. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you for that report. Then we will move on to our Public Relations Committee meeting update. Mr. Richard.
Yeah, okay, uh, everybody was present for March 1st back then, and, um, also everybody was present for this one. Uh, we talked about radio advertising a little bit and, and, uh, how we can coordinate with the ra, radio stations. Uh, I guess I may have brought up that, uh, it's always, being the old marketing teacher that I was, that it's kinda important to look at drive time and event sport time when you advertise on radio. So all that's been, uh, taken into consideration, and Mr. Gross will, uh, talk over with the radio people and bring the draft back to us. Um, Erin Johnson talked about, uh, all the obser, observances, proclamations, and special weeks they have, and, uh, she is going to try to use a process so that not every week and not every day and every minute, there's a new proclamation, and, and she's gonna try to coordinate and, and use a process to, to do that. We next talked about the marketing plan that we have for the board and, and external communications. Erin Johnson requested feedback on the best way to keep all communications consistent, and, uh, especially when it comes on social media. And, uh, she's going to try to consolidate some things, simplify the calendars, the district websites. And, um, there's also requests to get feedback when it comes to sports team, groups, football, basketball, yearbook, and this would help filter, uh, different things, uh, you know, for the, uh, you know, communications. And she's also gonna talk to Mr. Helgason about, uh, uh, discussion of this coordination at a future meeting. Uh, we're also looking at finding ways to communicate with non-parent community members, uh, whether it be the Early Bird, or whether it be a, you know, some other media. And, uh, Erin Johnson is working with Sue Stroh and Heidi Carlson to see if there's... And they did something already, I think, on October 7th, to encourage attendance. Uh, you know, uh, it's something that, uh, is becoming quite important, obviously, and, uh, they are continuing to work on it. I believe on October 7th, they had a character banquet or were planning one, and, uh, they will continue to... And they will continue to work on that. And we're looking at the Donovan Group again to see if they can offer some advice on communications and advertising. And their proposal will be brought back to us at the next meeting. And we adjourned at 2:13 PM. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you for that report. Then we will move on to our curriculum committee meeting update. Ms. Fisher.
Curriculum met last Tuesday and we were all in attendance. We also were joined by our physical education staff from the high school. And we heard about a PE course proposal, well, actually the needs assessment for that course proposal. The staff is proposing that we offer Fit for Life 2 as an elective and that would effectively replace PE 10, which is currently required. And so it would give students more flexibility in electives in the high school. The committee was pleased with the needs assessment. And so we will see a course, a final course proposal in November. And then we heard an update on the facilities renovations that have been proposed, have already gone to buildings and grounds. And so the committee also was in favor of that and said, great, let's move it on. Lastly, we looked at updates or topics for upcoming meetings. And that will include information on our school forest and the programming that we intend to do with the school forest, some information on standards-based grading, and additional updates on FastBridge and instructional coaches. The next meeting for curriculum will be November 16th.
Any questions? Thank you for that. Then we will move on to the policy, the second reading. But I would ask for a motion to table those three policies. I would like to send them back to the policy committee for some minor adjustments.
So move.
Second.
Has been made and seconded. Is there any questions or any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor for tabling that and sending them back to policy, which will be on November 9th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. All right. Also go back to policy and then move on to information while we have our handbook committee meeting minutes.
Yeah, handbook committee met on Tuesday, October 19th. Of our topics for discussion, the nondiscrimination language related to Title IX. We need to just, again, double check and make sure our language is up to date. We're pretty confident it is, but with recent changes, we need to double check and make sure it is up to date. Other topics brought forth by committee members. There's a request from the support staff work group to be able to carry over unused personal time at the end of the year and have that placed, if it does go unused, in the employees' FMLA bank. There was a request to review schedule languages, schedule language at all levels. For instance, in our handbook, there's schedule language for the high school. There's schedule language for the middle school. There's not schedule language for the elementary school. And so we'll be addressing that. There was a discussion about staff dress codes as well, mainly from like the food service group, because they are, they do have certain garments and things, or if you're in maintenance, just for safety purposes that you can or can't wear. And then there was, we talked about, and we addressed it at the meeting, but addressing breaks for support staff members. When and how often do you get those 15-minute breaks? And then discussion about employees signing out during the workday. And our next meeting will be February 1st.
Any questions? Okay, thank you for that. And then we will, in our packet, we had the school drill evaluation from the Rice Lake Middle School and the Rice Lake High School.
And just a reminder, as part of state statute and board policy, those need to be reported to you as a board of education. And students need to go through at least one drill annually where it's looking at these areas specific to potential school violence. And this is a part of the documentation that Colleen and, well, I was going to say Colleen and I, mainly Colleen, works to submit to the Department of Justice by the end of the calendar year. So every year at the end of December, we have to submit these, building safety plans, ensure building floor plans. Those pieces are submitted to the Department of Justice.
Any questions? Okay, thank you for that. Our upcoming meeting schedule, we've got on the 27th, on Wednesday, the online regional meeting. We have a legislative conference Saturday, November 6th over in Stevens Point. And then our state convention, January 19th through the 21st. If you can attend any of those, please let Colleen know so she can get you registered. And that is our upcoming meeting schedule. Board member suggestions or recommendations to be brought to the board at this time.
Just to note that on February 3rd in 2022, there will be a group of folks representing four counties called the Heart of the North Lobby Group. And they'll be going to Madison along with some of our students, along with students at some of the other high schools. And encourage anybody that would like to get involved in the Heart of the North, you certainly can. I'm going to do this by memory, but there's five or six areas. Obviously, one is education, and that's being headed by BJ Williams over at WITC. Natural Resources, Bert's in charge of that with another gentleman, Mike Garman. And then we have transportation, economic development, health. And I'm missing one someplace. But again, contact either me or the local chamber of commerce. It's a non-budget year, but it's really important that we get messages down there to Madison.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
The Feed Our Kids program is having empty bowls on Thursday at the high school cafeteria. I think it's a couple bucks to get a bowl of soup. And all of the proceeds support the Feed Our Kids Backpack Program for weekend meals to kids.
I do have one suggestion or recommendation. And although I appreciate updates from, you know, the Feed Our Kids Chamber in North, I think the bullet item says suggestions and recommendations. And after the last meeting, there was five items. None of them were recommendations or suggestions, rather plugs, announcements, political or social statements, questioning the administration. And I think our policy says the board speaks as one, and that's through our vote. And I think this particular bullet item is becoming used where it was not supposed to be used when it was originally inserted as a suggestion or recommendation. And so, I mean, I believe there's a lot of good. I'm guilty of it too. I announced my, you know, the tennis theme or whatever. But I just think if we open it, you know, either we need to change the bullet item to say, "Orn member forum," or eliminate it entirely, because I just think it opens up a lot of good, but potentially not so positive things about our district. And, you know, we can't get one without the other. And so there's a lot of districts that don't have this, don't give the board members the opportunity to, you know, just say whatever's going on or what they feel about life or politics. And so, you know, unfortunately, like I said, there's a lot of good, but there's also just controversial things that might disrupt our voice as a board that we speak through our vote. Five to four, nine, zero, whatever it may be. But that is our policy, is that the board speaks with their vote. So this is a recommendation and a suggestion is to remove item 14 from our agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I'm going to thank our staff for carrying out a board policy that was set in motion, I believe, in 2016. In 2016, the Board of Education asked Joshua Maury to hold a yearly community gender discussion. And thanks to Sue Stroff and Joshua Maury in the Gay Straight Alliance for holding that last week, Thursday. It was well-attended. And I also want to thank the public for coming and asking tough questions and listening and having a very good conversation. A conversation was had and it was polite. So I just want to thank the students, Joshua, Sue, and the public for that conversation last week.
Anything else? All right. Tonight we have our student representatives, our Faith and Lucas. So welcome tonight. And what do you have for us?
Hi, I'm sorry. Hi, I'm Faith and I'm a junior.
I'm Lucas and I'm a freshman.
And we just have a few things today. So first, the girls' cross-country team just placed first in sectionals this last weekend. And they're going to be going to state, like the whole girls' team.
Yeah, like she said, our sports are doing very well right now. Our football and boys soccer team are both moving on to the second round of playoffs. And they're both home games this week.
Yeah, and so our school is really excited about that, all the students are. And then last, we just have that for Halloween, we are working on some potential activities for Friday and all the students are pretty excited about. Yeah, that's all.
All right. Thank you for that update. All right. And district administrator comments?
One quick thing, it's great to have artwork back in the boardroom again. And we've got, at this point, the bulletin boards came in. And just for people that remember, we always had student artwork displayed in the old boardroom and it's back. So we're happy to have that. So please take some time and look at that. And then just, I think a lot of people know this, but tomorrow night, there's a city council meeting and we're going to be asking, or it's on the agenda for the city to take potential action. But we're asking them to partner with us and put in for an $8.65 million grant that would provide, you know, we've talked about the new pool project and pieces like that. And the city had committed up to $2 million to renovate the old pool into a community recreation facility. And with the neighborhood grants, block grants that are out there right now, looking to potentially partner to construct an entire new facility where the current pool is that would provide for two gyms, a walking track. And again, these would be for public use. And then also a new Boys and Girls Club Center. And it's a grant and we're asking to put in for that. If, you know, they would get it, great. If not, we understand and we'll move forward with our current plans. But it's an exciting opportunity for our community to potentially have that along with a new swimming pool. It could be great for our current residents and would be a great draw for people looking to come to the community. So we'll be doing that tomorrow night.
Any questions? All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion has been made. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. We are adjourned. Thank you.